Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwine. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We are thrilled to have you and we're also thrilled to have Julie with us here today. Hey Julie.
Hello, how are you?
We are so excited to be here today because we're going to be talking about how to create an oily content library. And this is for you, if you would like to be able to share more readily, to put information out there into the world that matters, to make a contribution, to build a following, to support and serve your people. But you don't want to have to become a designer, a graphic designer, a developer, whatever, to get it done. Today, we're going to talk about taking the time that you're already spending doing probably other things that are non-productive like scrolling and turn that into productive time in a fun and simple way that will build you assets for your business long term. So go ahead and head into the chat, let us know where you're coming in from. We're always excited to see who's here from all over the world. This is a free call that we offer to all of Team Young Living every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. So again, we are really thrilled to get into this. We have some slides to get into and we'll actually do some live demonstration here today as well. I'm also really curious, I'm going to be pulling out some examples here on our call today as well. Tell me something in the chat that you have learned that was new to you today, yesterday, sometime within the last 24 to 48 hours. What new thing have you learned? And it does not have to be specifically about a young living product. It can be about a wellness topic or something that is tangential to maybe how you use young living products, something that's contextual to your life. So maybe this is about green living, maybe this is about DIYing, right? You learned a fact or a factoid and you're like, oh, that's really cool. Let me know what that is in the chat, alright? And we're going to do something with it here in just a bit. Alright, so we're going to go ahead and pop out a video, get into our slides for today and get this show on the road. So let's do it guys. Alright, so if it'll let me do it here, here we go. Alright, so again, today we are talking about how you can build your own oily content library, creating content to serve your business long term in just 20 minutes a day. This is simple, this is easy, and it might actually be fun for you. I certainly hope that it is. So today, we're going to talk about how we can take time that we're already spending and turn that time into simple to create resources for your business. And I'm going to specifically to keep us on track here, because where we are talking about, you know, gathering new information and creating new stuff, this can be an absolute hole to sink your time into. So we're going to talk about a three-step stay productive strategy to make sure that you always have ideas in the mix and that you always have something that you can just pop in and create when you have a free 20 minutes. And we'll talk about the two different options that you can use to get started, alright? And we will, of course, as always, have our live help and Q and A at the close of our training. We typically dedicate the first half hour of these hour-long calls to our training topic of the day. And the second half is open Q and A. So if you are here looking for help, you are in the right place. Go ahead and add your questions to the Q and A and we will be sure to get to them. If it's something that Greg or Julie are able to answer, of course, they'll be getting with you before the close of the call. But if it's something that makes sense for us to kind of walk through together, we could certainly do that as well. And if you'd like to request that, feel free to go ahead and put that in the Q and A now too. Alright, now if you are watching this in our Facebook group where we are streaming live, or if you are watching this as a replay on our YouTube channel, head over to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession so that you can join our Zoom calls. We're live on Zoom every week and we invite you to come and be a part of this awesome community here that meets on a weekly basis. And if you would like to work together on a call, like the one we're having today, we dedicate again that second half of the call to working with you one-on-one. You can go to getoiling.com/web site review to reserve a spot for yourself for an upcoming call. It does not just have to be about your website. It could also be about getting started with Get Oiling or any number of different topics that relate to your Get Oiling system. And if you would like for our team to maybe just get some of the work off your hands where it comes to creating a custom website, setting up your automations, anything along those lines, you can go to getoiling.com/conceiers to learn more about our team and request a quote. So let's see, head over into the chat. What is something new that you learned today? Or, you know, yesterday, sometimes super recent, we all are, maybe just quick show of hands. We love learning about wellness topics and things that are related to, you know, taking our health into our own hands, right? Living, you know, lightly on the earth, right? Whatever that passion is for you that connects to young living, we kind of nerd about those things, yes? Right? Is that you? Awesome. So keep it going. Head over into the chat. I see we're talking, there's some product stuff here. Oh, we're learning about parasites and what those do to hormones. Oh, see, that's, that's deep in the nerd stuff and I love that stuff. Alright, so it doesn't matter what it is, it doesn't have to be in a particular direction. It really just needs to be something that was interesting to you, relevant to you, right? What is that thing that you've learned? And ideally, we want to think about the things that we're learning. And as we come across these new ideas, these things that we didn't know that we find interesting, we want to think about, you know, whether or not this could benefit someone in the future, right? So if you are maybe, you know, thinking about your own experiences, things that you've overcome, stuff that you learned that helped you to overcome those things you were working on, right? Or if you are maybe, for instance, again, just really interested about a particular area of wellness, there are people who don't know those things that you know, and they might not know them if you don't let them know. So think about that. What are the things that you know that could serve others? So the whole purpose of what we're talking about here today is around this shift that needs to take place for those of us who are brand partners. And this is going to be especially important to you if you haven't been consciously and intentionally operating your brand partner business like a business. Most of us don't really get a blueprint for what that actually looks like when we decide to get serious, when we get started with sharing and really intentionally wanting to grow young living. It's, you know, it's not something that we necessarily know that we need to do. But the first shift that we need to take, and that's the purpose of our call here today, is to move from a content consumer to a content creator. We are shifting from someone who is simply scrolling and taking in the content that others are creating and becoming someone who is stepping up and creating, alright? So at the end of the day, as a brand partner, you are the brand that is partnered with young living. That means you are your product, your business, you are your product. So you want to invest in growing yourself. If you aren't currently engaging in, in the search for knowledge and information that grows and expands the value that you bring to the table, it's high time you start doing that. Highly recommend that you maybe start reading books that are in alignment with your interests, especially where they overlap with young living products and how you use them and how you might encourage people to use them, right? Invest in yourself, right? Invest in growing yourself. And the growth of you, right, and the value that you have, that creates opportunities for you to expand the way you serve your audience, your following, and then ultimately your customers and clients. So when you are out there growing yourself and you learn something new, you can then create an opportunity to share that thing in the future where it's appropriate, where it can help someone. Now, this does pertain to what you learn about your product, right? So things that you can share with your customers in the future. But this is just as important for what you learn that is related to how you use products. So you're creating those opportunities to be able to share with people who don't know the value of young living yet. And so if you start to adopt this practice of choosing to become a creator of content, an originator of information, you will then eventually build a whole library of resources, building that credibility and saving yourself loads of time. If someone asks you a question, right, or if you are not sure what to talk about, you have a library to draw from that are specifically that the contents of that library are related, not in a general sense to young living, because I'm not going to encourage you to go create an encyclopedia of young living products, those things already exist. I'm talking about creating something that is specific to how you use product, your values, what you want to be known for, how you share and the value you bring to the table. Now, you don't have to be a creative, you don't have to be a designer. You don't have to be really anything other than someone who likes to learn about a particular topic and knows that they want to share the information that you have with the people who are ready, right? You don't have to have specialized skills, you don't have to be a designer, none of that. And if you have 20 minutes, you can do this every day. Don't spend your whole day doing these 20-minute windows of time. There are more productive ways for you to be sharing young living, like starting conversations. But where you find yourself, and maybe this is a habit that you can begin to build, as you are maybe scrolling through your feeds on different platforms and you hit a piece of inspiration, something that's interesting to you, before you allow yourself maybe to go and click down a rabbit hole or go consume more information, stop yourself. Is this something that I could turn around and use? I just learned something new. How could this serve my future people? And if the content that you are consuming during your business operating hours, obviously have free time, but if the content that you're consuming is not something that is in alignment with your growth and with the way you want to serve people, you may want to adjust how you're consuming content during those hours, right? So what I want to encourage you to do is when you're scrolling, you find something, it's interesting to you and you think that that is something that could serve how you grow in the future, do this. Pause, stop scrolling, don't take in another piece of content. Go and follow these steps that I'm about to share with you, alright? And this is the strategy, super, super simple. It's capture, create and store. Capture, create, store. So capture means you're going to collect that idea. Now, when you are learning something in the moment, you have an idea that grabs you. You're not always necessarily going to have your 20 minutes right then to create the thing that you want to create. So you do need to have a space that is dedicated to capturing information, right? So use something that is cloud-based. And the reason why I recommend cloud-based is that I want you to be able, regardless of what device you are on, if you're someone who is uber-connected, like, like I am, for instance, I might be out and about in the world on my phone. I need to be able to put information in there, but maybe when I actually do something with the information I collect, I'm sitting down at a desktop or a laptop device, a larger screen, right? If you only work out of one device ever, then your life is super simple. Just have, you know, an app or a document or something like that that you maintain for this. And use this only for this purpose. This is my swipe file, this is my capture file for my content ideas. And this is very specifically about bite-sized content. I want to make that note here because we do have other trainings where we talk about creating longer-form content like blog posts. That's not what we're doing here today. Creating a blog post, a really good one that's optimized the way that you want it to, is often going to take you a bit more than 20 minutes, right? We're talking about something that can help to build future blog posts here, which we'll talk about in a bit. So collect this in a place, capture and collect this in a place where you are able to reference it, no matter where you are. And what I want you to do is jot down the idea, it can just be the name of the topic. You could pop a link in if this maybe came from reading a blog post, put the link to the blog post where you got the idea. If you're scrolling through Pinterest and you see an image that gives you an idea, save the image, whatever it is, whatever the thing is that made you go, ooh, now that's something I might be able to use in the future. Put that into this file, okay, so that you've got something to work with. Now, if you have 20 minutes when you, you know, when you come upon this information and you actually have time, you're just going to continue moving forward from here, but know that you're not always going to have your 20 minutes. Collect this stuff so that you can work from it in the future. Because you want to be adding to this list on a regular basis as you're learning new things and you want to add more pieces of information to your collection. Now, the next step is to create. This is the thing that's just going to take us 20 minutes or less, alright? And what we're going to do here is one concept at a time, one concept at a time. So this isn't a, I saw someone was talking about, obviously, we mentioned like parasites, right? So like parasites in your digestive tract can disrupt the hormone balances in the body. That is an enormous topic, like you could probably go to Google Scholar right now and find like, you know, peer-reviewed research about that. That's not what we're doing here. But what we, but what we can do is, is take this down to something bite-sized, right? Because at the end of the day, what you find really fascinating is probably quite advanced compared to the knowledge of the person, the interest and knowledge of the person who doesn't know about young living yet that you need to connect with. Now, obviously, if you've got your fellow nerds who are your customers, who would just absolutely love to know about that and how they can use products in the young living universe to be able to, to address that thing that you're talking about there, then, you know, more power to you, just be clear on who it's for, right? But one concept at a time. I want you to take the information that you've learned and spin it into a bite-sized, shareable piece of information. This can be a couple of sentences, it could be a couple paragraphs. If there are links that are helpful to include, include those, right? If there are images that are important to use here, use them. This can be, again, short, like this is just a couple of sentences with a link. It can be longer where you are explaining a concept and maybe sharing a link or not, right? Use Write With AI to help you if you don't feel confident. So maybe for instance, going back to the example here, which is, which could get very much into the weeds, become something very large, you know, where we're talking about this discovery that, that parasites in the digestive tract can disrupt hormones. You might want to put those, put some of that more high-level information into Write With AI and ask it to summarize and write this in layman's terms, you know, and give it maybe a maximum of a paragraph or three sentences or something like that. If you don't feel great about doing that yourself, absolutely use your tool and Get Oiling to create something. And then if, again, this is something that is best explained or demonstrated with an image, then you can, of course, create an image in Canva if necessary. Majority of the time, it's not necessary. This is really for those of you who are just really obsessed with aesthetic. You can create it in Canva, but in, in a lot of cases, it really is just perfectly fine to put this in words-only format and to copy. Now, the final step is to store and keep organized these resources for future use. So we're going to store these things as saved replies in Get Oiling. Saved replies are a very versatile feature in your Get Oiling platform and they will allow you to basically plug that information that you create into a myriad of different places. So when we create the saved reply, it's really important that you're clear on the content of what's in this resource, right? So if you're creating a saved reply that is talking about parasites and hormone balance and maybe you're also mentioning or recommending paragize, right? So you, you may want to like include all of those things together. Make sure all three of those titles, those topics are included in the name of the saved reply. Sorry, paraphrase, thank you Jackie. So if you want to, if you want to make sure that you are able to easily go and find this resource where you talk about paraphrase, where you talk about, where you talk about this study that you found and you have a link to it, right? And you talk about hormones and et cetera, you want to be able to go to your saved replies and search paraphrase. You want to be able to go to your saved replies and search parasites, right? So that you can go and collect, find that information quickly and use it, right? So be sure to name title your saved reply appropriately so that you can find it easily in the future. And then, of course, in that saved reply, add your copy that you've created, use Write With AI if you want to. Certainly encourage you to do that, include links where appropriate and include images if you need them as well. Format it however you like. And if you are linking to young living products, use that leaf link. So if they decide to go and buy paraphrase when they get that piece of information, they are using your link to go and put that in their cart. Now, let's talk about what this means. Use your resources. When you create these resources, every time you spend that five minutes or 20 minutes, if you really want to use Canva, that really is a difference here. You can, you can spend five minutes to do this and create loads of these little bits of resources, these little bite-sized resources for yourself. And the only thing that's really going to take it up to 20 minutes is if you really feel like you need to create a cute image for it, right? And if that's, that's your prerogative, you get to do that if you want. But you can actually be prolific with this in less time. So if you want to use your resources, you can take that saved reply and you can add that to an email or a text. So if someone asks you a question, you could say, hey, what's your email or what's your phone number? I can shoot my information, I can shoot some information about this over to you real quick, right? So then you just add them to your contact manager, bonus lead in your contact manager where you can keep notes, hello? And then you can shoot them off an email, use that saved reply to populate an email or a text. You can add that information into campaigns. Maybe you're creating a campaign from scratch, or maybe you are using campaigns from some of our incredible content providers and you want to supplement them with your own spin, with maybe some of your own stories, adding more and really making those your own. You can create campaigns using these saved replies. You can insert into newsletter content. So maybe, in this case, maybe paraphrase is part of a gift with purchase in the future. Somebody purchases 300 PVN loyalty rewards, they get a paraphrase maybe one month and you want to be able to add in that information, by the way, here's this study, right? And you've automatically got that thing, you could just pop it right in there, right? Because saved replies are modular, you can just pop them in where you want them, even to existing content. You can write blog content and pop information like this into there as well. And again, if you used your leaf link, you've got that link ready to go. So if you are going to talk about a product, it's going to link off appropriately. And then finally, if you are maybe creating resources inside of a vault for your customers, you can add that saved reply content to an online class lesson, right? Pretty cool, you can do a lot of stuff with this. A saved reply is, in a way, Amelia, it's kind of like a save file, but it's not. We actually have a files manager where you can upload things like PDFs, audio files, et cetera. A saved reply is, I think on other platforms, you might see it as like a canned response, right? Where if someone asks me this, I can find this reply and then just pop it into the editor to, to send back a message, right? It's more like that, except you can use it in loads of different places. So you can have formatted text, images, links, et cetera. And that saved reply makes your life really easy because you can send these things off really quickly without having to go and find that link. Remember what I said before and put all of that information in where you want to have it. So let's go create some of these resources, you guys. Alright, so I want to get into, let me see if there's anything here in the Q and A. Doesn't look like there is. Alright, so what are we going to create, you guys? We want to, what do, okay, for the nature reset stuff would be a great way to use saved replies, that's absolutely correct. Let's go ahead and take a look at what the leaf link is so that you guys know what I'm talking about. And, and then we'll actually go into creating some of these resources. I would absolutely love it if somebody share a factoid with me, okay, learning about electrolytes and why I love young living product. Let's see. So, okay, so AJ, you know, we've already been talking about parasites and hormones, let's just roll with that. How about that? Alright, so you actually found someone on Instagram shared this information with you, right? Are you, you're following them or you found them in your feed or something like that? So essentially, what you're going to do is you're going to go into, I like to use, I'm an Apple user and I have like all of the Apple things that someone can have. And so that means for me, I'm using the Notes app on Apple. There are other notes apps that are cloud-based that you could maybe have between devices. The simplest solution to this would be to create a, like just a Google Doc. Yeah, just use, use like a Google Doc and, and just call it content ideas and then just pop that in there and then remove them from the list after you've created them, right? So I would do that, I would Google Keep, thank you, Suzie. I'm not as familiar with the Google, the Google ecosystem as I used to be. So, so yeah, you're going to take that information, you're going to find your, you know, your, your study. Maybe there is a study, if you're the type of person who loves to reference, maybe articles, right? Oh, beautiful, AJ, thank you so much. You have a, someone's blog post here, beautiful. Okay, so here, I'm going to just go ahead and share my screen. So here's what I would do here. So this is the, the website that, that she got this information from. And this very annoying pop-up that doesn't have a way for me to, to get out of it. Get Oiling won't do that to you, by the way. Alright, so here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to copy, oh geez. I'm going to copy the content of this post, oh dear. And I'm going to go to our Write With AI. I wonder, oh my gosh, the formatting of this, this is kind of strange. I don't know if this is going to work because it's actually like trying to copy the pictures on here too. Maybe if I, here's my reader view, perfect. So I'm going to reader view and I'm going to copy this blog post content. Okay, so I'm going to copy this, I'm going to head over to my dashboard and I'm going to go into Write With AI and I'm going to ask them to summarize this blog post in layman's terms in no more than two paragraphs. Paste. And then you give it a minute and let it give you a response. Now, there's, let's see, quite a bit of content in here and, and we can't always necessarily, depending on how long the blog post is, in this case, it is quite a long one. So that might not be, you know, we may want to do something a bit different here. Or you could take some of the main points from this and, and actually ask AI to, to write something up for you. Alright, so okay, so this, this is nice. I don't know that that's necessarily what we want, but maybe what we do is we say, write two paragraphs in layman's terms about the link between parasites and hormone imbalance. And then we'll say, share reasons additionally. Share reasons why someone might try young livings paraphrase as a solution and then write it. And you could also, of course, give it notes here, tell it to write in a lighthearted tone. You're writing to women in their 40s, right? Give it a little bit more than I just did here, if you really want this to be great and like ready for you to, to publish. But essentially, we're just going to grab this once it's created. And then we're going to go and, and create a resource with it. So here's our two paragraphs, I'm going to copy that to clipboard. And then I'm going to head over here to context, sorry, this is actually under, what is it, content, library, saved replies, yes. Alright, so I'm going to add a saved reply and I'm going to call this parasites and hormone imbalances. And I'm going to write paraphrase because I know I'm going to talk about paraphrase. I'm going to come over here and paste what Write With AI gave me. And then I can go in here and you can see where we talk about paraphrase. Definitely read this and make sure that it looks the way that you want it to, that it fits compliance to your liking according to how you plan to share it. Now, we go over here under more miscellaneous, this is where our leaf link lives. Insert young living link with my member number. So I'm going to go to young living, to your market. And then we're going to, we're going to look for paraphrase. There it is. I'm going to grab the link, it's right up here. And then over here, I'm going to insert. So there we go, hit the leaf link, paste in that link to young living. Right? And of course, we're signed into the Get Oiling account here. If we were signed into your account, then this would have your sponsor ID and enroller ID filled out. So this is the link, I'm going to go ahead and copy that. And I'm going to maybe format this. Here's paraphrase. Right? So now that's linked there. And then we could also say, add paraphrase to your, your next order by clicking here, right? And we'll make a button here, so we'll say order now. And I'm going to use that same link, so I'm going to hyperlink it. Paste that leaf link content in there, insert, and I'm going to turn it into a button. By changing the Insert, and I'm going to turn it into a button change by changing the style. There we go. Now, what if I would also like to maybe include an image of paraphrime in this? If that's important to you, by all means do it. So I'm going to come back over here and I'm going to grab this image. Save it to downloads. And then I'm going to pop it in over here. So I'm going to go to insert image and notice that I've put the cursor right over here to the left. You'll see why in just a moment. I'm going to insert from my device. There it is. And it is huge. So we want to change the size of this. Once it's done uploading, you can go right here to change size and that's a hundred percent. I'm going to swap that down to maybe fifty percent and see if I like it. And it's still a bit big for my taste. So how about, I'm going to change this to uh, three hundred pixels. You could also drag it. See, that's, that's a good one. All right, so one other thing. Now you see how it's just like up at the top and it doesn't really look so great here? Well, let's click here and change the display. We're going to go inline. And now it actually shows up next to the text. So, um, what we can do is I'm going to actually drag this down even further and you can actually see it show up here. Or I could even maybe move this, uh, to another spot, uh, right? Where right? So you can actually place this in line. You could also, if you knew that you wanted to maybe use, uh, an image like this, uh, and you wanted this to maybe be in sort of like a cute format. You, we do have, uh, saved reply templates here. If you scroll down, you'll see that there are newsletter templates that you can use, uh, to incorporate that. So when I go to create this saved reply, maybe I want to add this to my, um, into my member area, right? Maybe I want to add this into an online class. That's a really simple thing to do. We could simply go over, uh, to our member area, to our classes. Let me see. I'll just go ahead and create this one here. And, uh, and then maybe I want to add it into this lesson. I can simply come right over here to saved replies. And I can search for, because I know I'm talking about paraphrime. I can pop that in right there and the content is there with the link to order. And similarly, I could put this into an email, put it into a blog post and so on. All right, so that's the simplest path. Let's do, uh, we'll do one more, uh, maybe following something similar here. We'll go into Canva. And then maybe you want to create an infographic. So I'm going to look for infographic templates. And there you go. There's all kinds of great information in here. You could certainly, I, I would recommend that you start with a template that already exists. So maybe we'll customize this one. And then you could spend your twenty minutes, if this is something that you love to do, changing the colors out, making them your own, uh, changing out these icons. Again, making those look like what you want. And then taking that information that you have in the saved reply content here and putting it into the infographic. So this then becomes something that you could, again, put into your saved reply. So that that is something that you can easily insert as content anywhere you like. Or of course, if you are saving this as a PDF, you could put that into the file section of your site. Or you could save it as an image and that can be in your image library. Right? So really quick and easy, simple stuff that you can do. Highly recommend that you just start, uh, with the written material, right? As often as you can, uh, because it's going to be the easiest thing, uh, for you to get started with. And if, if there is a necessity, right? If you are someone who, um, who really prioritizes the use of images, uh, then by all means, of course, you can use that additional time, but it's not necessary. Okay, so Alison had a question, um, taking another's blog post, putting into AI isn't violating any copyright, fine to rewrite others' work. So I was using an example there. Essentially what you're really wanting to do in an ideal sense, what you're wanting to do here is to condense information into something that is, in your words, appropriate for how you would share with somebody. So I would think, for instance, um, and I've spoken with AJ before, so I have an idea of who she's speaking to. So what I would really want to do is take the main points that I learned from that person's, uh, blog post, for instance. And, and, and then kind of ask myself, what about this matters to my people that I'm serving? Right? So for AJ's audience, who are they? And what would they find valuable or interesting about this? Then you can create a resource. And if you are actually directly summarizing someone else's blog post, the best thing to do, if you find that that's the only thing that you really can do. I think most of us are going to be able to articulate in our own words. Cause if you learned it, you should be able to say it, you know? So I would put your own summary in there and then ask AI to rewrite yours. But if you absolutely feel like you must use someone else's content, then do the right thing and cite the source, right? Say, you know, here's where I originally learned this and link to their content, link to that blog post, right? So if you are using someone else's work in a more direct way like that, then absolutely attribute one hundred percent period. End of story. Yes. Okay, uh, if you have questions, uh, please make sure those are getting into the Q and A so that I don't miss any of those from you guys. We don't have anyone signed up for a live work review today, so we do have the rest of the hour to work together, either digging further into your questions and clarification on this. If you want to kind of play around and see, you know, maybe what we can create together, we could certainly do that. Let me know. Or if you would actually like to look at something together that you're working on in your system, whether it's about this or someone else, uh, or something else that you're working on, then of course, uh, let me know. Let me see. Yeah, if you were chatting up Amelia, if you were chatting up somebody, uh, on social media and they were like, hey, I'm interested in getting, I, I want to know more about that thing you're talking about. Then yeah, just say, hey, I've got it actually stored in, in my system. I could send it to you via email or text. What do you prefer? Yeah, that's as simple as that. There are more automated ways to do that, but it, that really is the easiest way. Just pop them into your contact manager and send off that information. Okay, um, could you specify what you're wanting to see done again, Lynn? Do let me know. How do you save an audio file? Would love to send personal messages for anniversaries and birthdays. So, uh, all you have to do is create your audio file. And then you can add it to your files section, uh, in your get oil link system. And you would send that via email and that on a page, et cetera, just like you would a PDF. Uh, but you do want to be mindful of the file size. So that's going to be right over here under files. So you can see that there are PDFs here. I want to see if there's any, uh, you could do calendar files here. If you have like a recurring calendar event, you want to invite people to, um, you could put MP threes in here. Here we go, is an MP, uh, that was a video, which should not be in here. I think that was probably just a, a fun thing we did. But yeah, you can actually put, um, all kinds of stuff in here. You could even, you know, put actual, you know, more traditional files, right? Like if you wanted to share a spreadsheet with somebody for some reason, like that's something that you could put here too. So it's just general, uh, files. Let's see, what happened to the image? Didn't see it when you added it to the class. Oh, so I didn't actually save it with, uh, with the image there. I removed it because it wasn't particularly useful. But here's what I would do. If you were, if, if it is important to you in an instance like that, that you, um, that you create stuff with images. What I would recommend that you do when you create your saved reply is that you start from like the beginning with your, um, with, with the saved reply template. So, uh, here, let me go back over here. And if you go over here to like you're, we're creating a saved reply, right? And then we're going to go to the saved replies dropdown. I like the recipe template because it's already kind of built to include an image as well as this other information. Right? So, uh, this could be like a, did you know? Right? Like a section of your newsletter or a blurb on your blog and you just go in and you swap this image out. I, I really like to use the stuff that's like already in here for us so that we don't have to worry about coming up with something brand new from scratch. Right? So it's, it's in there, it's populated. Let me come down here. And, um, actually maybe up here. And I'm going to go and grab that content from that saved reply that I created previously. Here we go, there's paraphrime. And I'm just going to copy this stuff right here. And then delete it. And then right here, I'm going to remove the formatting. And here, I'm actually, I'm going to put it right here and then I'm going to paste plain text and see how we do. Yeah, there you go. Oops. And then you, of course, you would want to make sure that you, um, delete that, um, or sorry. There we go. Just going to backspace so that can go away. Perfect. There we go. And then of course, you just want to make sure that you are linking this. And I don't have the link handy right now. But yeah, you could, um, you could absolutely set it up like this, if that's something that was important to you. Um, and then this way you could again easily pop this into a blog post format. This would go very nicely into a newsletter. Right? So again, you could do something like this. It's not absolutely necessary. If somebody says, I want to know about that thing that you're talking about. The information is way more important to them and the accessibility of the information than how cute you make it. Right? Because at the end of the day, like in this particular instance, having a picture of paraphrime bottle next to talking about parasites and hormones really feels more like we're pitching them paraphrime. Right? So in that particular instance, I wouldn't even bother with getting a picture from the Young Living site. I might, again, if, if I were feeling like I really needed to brand this to myself, is I would go use my brand colors and create an image that had like weird icky bacteria or something, right? That was, you know, that, that actually showed, um, you know, more of what we're talking about, more of what's important to the ideal person. Now, if this is a couple of paragraphs that are about paraphrime and you want to encourage your customers to get paraphrime. And here's some of the reasons why, you would actually write this a bit differently. Right? And then of course, yeah, sure, you'd have the picture of paraphrime because people know that they are coming to get this particular information from you because you know more about Young Living than they do. Right? But in the first instance, we really are talking about, hey, if you're exhausted, you might want to get your gut checked. Right? And if you find that you've got issues with your gut, you want to be careful what you're using. Here's what I used. Go over here to learn more about it. Right? So that's kind of the idea. All right, let's see what else we got here. Do you have a suggestion about how to keep a list of things you've captured and created? Like for those of us who may get a crazy lot of ideas, make a lot of saved replies and don't even remember what they were about to search, uh, for them and saved replies. In other words, make a list of your captured ideas that will tell you what to search for in saved replies. Hmm, okay, so this is almost like creating an index for yourself to be able to go and search. I think this is a really good idea. Depending on, um, depending on what your sort of preferred, uh, sort of life management, uh, apps, softwares, uh, notebooks, et cetera, look like for you. I, I would create a capture system for those. I mean, I would do something similar here as well with, um, things like, like the tags that I use in my system. Right? So if I know that, you know, my general mailing list, the tag is general mailing list and my, uh, you know, my, my customers are called clients in the system, right? So I would do this for tag management as well. So, uh, Jackie, I would use something, um, I would begin with something along the lines of like message mapping, which I know you're familiar with from some of the programs, uh, that you've been in with me. I would create sort of a master outline. Here is the stuff, uh, that I talk about. And you want to be able to kind of see contextually where that particular topic sits in relation to the other things that you're known for and that you will show up and talk about. This also helps you to more logically see how you might be able to transition from talking about this topic to offering this other thing. Right? Or, you know, like if you have a course or a program. And, uh, and, and Suzy again is saying keep. So, so try Google keep is the resounding recommendation here. Name it saved reply, add bullets for what you have. Beautiful. She's using those for her freebies. Thank you so much for saving that, uh, and, and sharing that with us. Let's see. And I think that's a good idea as well to maybe put into our, our wishlist is to maybe have collections of saved replies, kind of like we have collections for campaigns because that is content and it can, uh, get big. So Google keep, uh, Alison, that would be just if you have a Gmail, like that's, it's, it's a Google cloud based service. So you don't have to have a particular like a Mac or Windows or whatever. Like you can just be on any phone, any computer and use that. So I don't personally know very much about it, uh, but I bet if you look it up, uh, there's probably some great articles. And it's like docs and sheets, Suzy says. Yeah. So it's just going to be just a really simple, uh, thing. It's not a word processor. It's actually just, uh, I think it sounds like a bit simpler than that, uh, and, and cloud based. So worth giving a shot. Let's see, what else? Cornelius says, I feel like I want to delete everything I've stored in my saved replies and start all over. So misuse from my side for a long time, such a mess. Leave what's in there and move on and spend more. Yeah, don't worry about it. Yeah, just create, uh, create something new. Of course, if you, if you want to, you know, pare it down, manage it, that's perfectly fine. But kind of like, you know, if you have a Gmail account, for instance, like, you know, you don't really have to go through and delete all of those super old emails. Like if they're not in your way, just leave them for now, you're fine. Um, oh, and Suzy says Pinterest has a lot of information on Google keep. Good to know. Good to know. Awesome. Thirty-five pages of saved replies. Yeah, so this is, this is why it's important to make sure that you're including the name, uh, or including the keywords in the name so that you know what you're searching for. So, um, this is where clear over clever wins because you want to be able to find the thing that you're looking for. So if you know that you're talking about hot topic A, call it that. And then if you know you're talking about Young Living product B, also call it that. Include those there. And nobody else is going to see it but you. So make it clear so that you can find it. And that's why that search feature, whether that be in your saved replies or even just the main search feature in the good oiling system, if you just type in the word. So maybe you, you know, you talked about paraphrime, uh, in a blog post, you talked about paraphrime in a saved reply. You talked about paraphrime in a lesson. All of those things will come up if you just type paraphrime in the search bar and get oiling. So, um, that is, that's huge. All right, got a question in the Q and A. If it'll let me open it up. Message mapping and life management sounds perfect. Any recommendations on learning this? So, um, okay, yes, huge, huge recommendation, actually two on the life management side. Uh, because this is, this is such an important topic that most of us, uh, are not super fluent in. And it's because most of us have grown up, uh, have, have lived the, at least the majority of our lives between two worlds. Right? Like there's a whole new generation and maybe some of you are here, uh, and I'm assuming that the rest of us are just older. But, um, but there's a lot of folks now, the younger generations that have grown up with nothing but the digital stuff. Right? Like they stopped learning cursive handwriting, like, you know, everything's digital, everything's on devices. And so those of us who didn't grow up that way, or those of us who know what the analog world feels like, and we still kind of operate in some ways partially analog. It's, it's a different set of obstacles and challenges. And so there are two, um, two authors. One of them is Cal Newport, who I absolutely recommend just basically anything that he's written, um, or his blogs. He's a Georgetown professor of like, I don't know, computer science or something like that. But he is an absolute expert on sort of this personal, like this life management stuff, uh, this organization, digital life stuff. And he's a huge proponent of digital minimalism, which is the, uh, the name of one of his books, which I recommend for sure as well. So he's got a book on productivity that's excellent. And a lot of his ideas actually come from another book that's, uh, an older one that's been updated called Getting Things Done by David Allen. That's a very short read and his systems are excellent. So, um, David Allen is where, where you're thinking about sort of organizing your ideas. And, and keeping those in sort of like a whole life perspective. Getting Things Done by David Allen is an absolute must read. And I don't, I, I think that everybody else who's done productivity and organization content since the nineties have really just been following what he has said. You know, they're like scholarly articles have been written about his system. So that book I think everyone should check out. And then Cal Newport has really kind of taken that and leveled it up into what it looks like in the field of knowledge work, which is where we exist. Right? And then Cal Newport has really kind of taken that and leveled it up into what it looks like in the field of knowledge work, which is where we exist, right? You may think that you are a salesperson of oils, but you are actually a knowledge worker. Because it is you, the product, you are the product that you're selling. It is, it is how you connect to young living product. It is your brand. It's what you have to say. It's what you bring to the table. So Cal Newport puts a lot of that stuff into really great context. Now getting into message mapping, Jenny. The personal branding intensive, become an icon, personal branding intensive is a place where I go into this in great detail. That is something that we offer twice a year. You get access to twice a year where you can either purchase access or you can I think it's renew or get started with an annual plan and you get access to it. Essentially, what you're doing in message mapping, Jenny, is dumping your ideas about what you want to show up and talk about into silos in an outline. So I know that I want to show up and talk about hormones. And this is all for, I know who I'm talking to. I'm talking to women in their, you know, late 30s, early 40s who are just starting to experience significant changes in their body and their metabolism. Something's not quite right. They don't know what it is and their doctors aren't really helping them. So that's my person, right? So I know that I'm going to be talking about hormones and educating her on that because that is more the reason why she's feeling the way she's feeling that it is anything else. I'm going to be talking about diet. I'm going to be talking about sleep. Those are going to be my three main topics. And so when I come and talk about diet, I'm not just going to write a blog post about diet. No, I'm going to talk about like, what are the things in diet that I'll talk about? I'll talk about intermittent fasting. I'll talk about you know, cutting out certain inflammatory ingredients. I'll talk about getting this done in 30 minutes because she's busy. And then under those, I can expand subtopics. When I'm talking about intermittent fasting, I'll talk about how to get started. I'll talk about recipes that work for it. You know what I mean? So we're, we're essentially just creating a huge outline that expands into the different sort of like high level, sublevel, and then into like, here's the stuff of my content, right? So my blog posts, my you know, my lead magnets, these little bits of content like we're talking about today and so on. That's essentially what it is. And it's a refinement exercise, but it's also just a brain clearing, dumping out of your head exercise. This is actually something that David Allen talks about in getting things done. The more overwhelmed you feel, the more likely it is that you are relying on stuffing everything inside of your skull and not actually getting it out into a tool that can serve you big picture. And so these outlines and these sort of brain dump and sort of organization of concepts and exercises is how you can do that. If you're more of a visual person, you could also do this the old school way, like kind of whiteboard post-it note style. Get yourself a ton of post-it notes and open table or a wall or a whiteboard and 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 move these things around, right? Be like, all right, this is the topic. Here are the other ideas and group them together so that you can kind of see how they get together. But yeah, definitely recommend reading those books and following what they say because they are super good. I'm actually rereading Getting Things Done right now. Such a, such a great book. All right, let's see what else. What else are we missing? All right. Yeah, you guys are great, great questions today. Do we have any more before we move forward? I love all of the information you guys are sharing here. Please keep it coming and of course, carry this conversation forward in our Facebook group. That is facebook.com groups, get oiling online. If you aren't a part of it yet, you could search for get oiling on Facebook. I hope you'll join us, Greg. Just put the link into our chat here. And also while you're at it, let us know what else do you want to learn about? What's something that you want to get better at in your business that you are maybe looking for information on, or maybe you just don't feel like it's out there. We'll create it for you. We're here every Thursday at noon. So we would be thrilled to help you with that next project. Remember that our team is here for you. Go into your get oiling account, check out the success academy. There's so many resources there and growing. I'm currently working on a video project right now for you guys, little bite sized videos. So that you can reference those things quickly and easily. There are links to get help from a live person on a call like this one, or maybe calls that Pam has, you can connect with our team. And you can, of course, search for and find relevant topics in our previous trainings like this one. So we look forward to seeing you back here again next week. We look forward to hearing from you. In the meantime, till then, hope you guys have a great week. Take care, everybody.